Town council meeting to order. Excuse me for jacking off, but I'm having a heat flash. Men have heat flashes also. Anyway, I'd like to welcome you all again and welcome those who are watching by way of internet. And I will go over the calendar that we have here. On Friday, October 31st, we'll have treats on the street. So tell everyone, you know, to bring your kids on Main Street up here. Was that start at five?
Five o'clock.
Yeah, five o'clock, yeah. And then on Saturday, November the first, we have Hazelwood. That's our Mayor Hazelwood back there.
Same time.
Mayor Hazelwood is promoting that there same time at five o'clock. And then Tuesday, November 11th, we will be counseling. I mean, we're not having our regular scheduled meeting because of Veterans Day. We are moving that to a special call meeting in Tuesday, November 18th. You want to have any questions to that?
The organizational meeting will be Tuesday, December the 9th.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll move along with public comment. We have one here. Oh, we have two, I'm sorry. I'll just lay out the rules. The rules are it's a three-minute time limit, which the town attorney keeps that time limit. And I will turn it over to our town attorney to invitation to our folks that want to speak. I'm trying to be professional.
Jane Stamey.
Good evening. My name is Jane Stamey with RCF Construction Company, and I am a volunteer member of the Big T Club and a former vice president of the organization. On behalf of the Tuscaloosa Athletic Department, Waynesville Middle Athletic Department, Feeder Schools, Hazelwood, Jonathan Valley, June Alaska, and River Bend, we say thank you to this board for your donation to rebuild the Dutch Fisher Field and keep Mountaineer Little League on their home territory. Sports teaches life lessons. Hillary Clinton wrote a book. It takes a village to raise a child. And with Hurricane Helene, it has been just that. A true caring heart for the fight to rebuild. This will be hard work, but that's okay. It will get done. To Mountaineer Little League, Mountaineer Youth League boys and girls, we wish you the best in your goals and hopefully one day you will walk the halls of THS just like all the alumni before you. To the board, again, thank you. And the Big T Club teaches these mottos. To stand tall. Once a Mountaineer, always a Mountaineer. It's never goodbye. Mountaineers are for life. And win or lose, go Mountaineers.
Thank you. All right, so. Jane and I go way back. We were classmates. Yeah. The thing is, I got old and she didn't. All right, we have still another one?
Kay Lindsay.
Good evening. I wish I was here to say thank you, but I'm afraid I'm here to complain. I have called no less than 25 times in the last year about the inconsistency in my trash being picked up. I live at 768 South Main Street, which is literally a left turn from Legion Drive. I've met with, I've called Ricky multiple times. I've talked to Paige. I went and met with Jesse and Ricky a couple of weeks ago and laid out the big map of the trash. But we have about a 50-ish percent success rate in the trash and recycling being picked up at our house. And that is a basic function of local government is to provide those kind of services. So I'm here pleading to the town council because I have exhausted all my resources with staff to figure out what it's going to take for my trash to get picked up consistently. And if it can't be done, I need to know what the process is for us to return the toters and be refunded for a service that we are not receiving.
Yeah. Okay, ma'am. We'll make sure your trash gets picked up. Kansas, would you please make note of that and give that to Ricky? Our public works director is here tonight. And I'm sure he will handle that and take care of that. Do you have any more?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move on to additions or deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have four additions to the agenda. I would like to maybe add these. The first one is the agreement to renovate the Dutch Fisher Athletic Field. I would like to move that to just the first thing on the agenda. The other three are resolution, and these are all on your desk in front of you. The resolution authorizing the submission of a loan grant for the Browning Branch pump station and the Canton-Clyde Waynesville Water Interconnect, the budget amendment to purchase two HVAC units for town hall, and the adoption of revised rules for the Waynesville Recreation Center. And ask that those go to the end of the agenda.
Okay, that is your motion, correct?
It is.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Second. But Julia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks shall laud sign, okay? We've got an amendment. Consent agenda?
Could I ask that item E just be placed so that Chief Mahaffey can acknowledge a grant that we received? That's what this item is, and I think it'd be nice to note it in public.
And a consent.
Uh huh.
It could, he, he would like to speak at, would be fine.
Okay.
Would you like to speak on it?
We always like to give good news.
Oh, yeah. We got to break you in since you're the new fire chief.
I know.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. As you know, last meeting, you approved us accepting that grant from FEMA. It's just around $290,000 with our part only being $13,000. What we plan to do with that and what the grant was awarded for was to purchase 29 walkie-talkies, for lack of a better term. These radios are ridiculously expensive. I hate to say that, but they are the top of the line. And they will allow us to make up some shortfalls that we had before and especially that we saw during the flood. One of these radios are tri-band, which will allow us to speak on every frequency that an agency in the county would speak on. And one of the issues that we ran into, we were unable to speak to the folks that came to help us. Viper or 800 megahertz system. It's a statewide system. We had a few radios, so a few of us could talk, but we were not consistently able to speak with the folks that were here to help us. So this will eliminate that. It will also let us speak on the law enforcement frequency band, which they've kind of moved away from some of that, but we still can speak with Forest Service, who we interface with on wildland fires. Also, these are true public safety radios where the ones that we have don't. We figured out the issue with that real fast during the flood. Once they got wet, we were unable to talk to anyone. These are waterproof. Like, one of our captains is a member of a volunteer department. He actually dropped his into about four feet of water. Luckily was able to pick it up and use it and never lost communication. So this will be a huge help as communications are one of the main problems that we run into on the fire scene. So those budget amendments are to allow us to purchase the radios and to accept the grant money. So again, thank you for allowing that and thank you for the time.
Any questions for Jake anymore?
If my memory serves me correctly, and Rob Mayberry was at our emergency service meetings and stuff, Darren Helene, didn't we have to loan a few, a couple of our good radios out to highway patrol? So this is so important for us to
Absolutely.
to make sure that we've got what we need to communicate with one another.
Again, we were lucky enough to get this grant. We squeezed in right before the government shutdown. Some of my fellow fire chiefs are kind of upset with me that we heard before they heard on any of those. So we had written that grant off, didn't think that there was any action going to be taken on it, but somehow we squeaked in, so.
Good job.
Good job. Good question, Julia.
I remember that in one of our meetings, we were having to loan our stuff out because their folks are trying to make it happen.
Julia, we come here, our emergency services representatives on this board. She keeps up with the pleas and fire for us on the board there, and it means a very, very lot for us. So thank you, Julia.
So Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, shall laud sign. Okay, I'm going to move some things around. Going to go ahead and bring the agreement to renovate the Dutch Fisher Athletic Field. Richie, would you and Ashley might be come up in case we have questions? I can pretty much do a rundown on this, and I'm sure Rob can back me up. But we've been working real closely with Ashley and Richie and Mackie. And the town attorney has drawn up an agreement that is workable and not. And Rob tweaked a little bit. There was a couple of things that the Mountaineer Little League asked that we tweaked a little bit there. But it has been a, it was a blessing and the town attorney come through like I asked.
Well, I just have to give a big assist to Rob, who gave me a draft to work from, which sped things along significantly. It's always a lot faster when I can revise a draft that's already in front of me instead of coming up with something from scratch. So shout out to Rob for being a huge help. So the contract you have in front of you is a basic agreement to allow the town to give the funds to Mountaineer Little League to distribute and build the Dutch Fisher Field back to its original condition. There are some conditions that are a matter of law. General statute 55A-16-24 is going to require Mountaineer Little League to disclose some of their financial records to us to make sure that they are in good financial order and that they are carrying out their stewardship of these funds appropriately. And then also, we have some clear obligations on the funds from the Dick's Sporting Goods Grant going expressly to the field, which is one of the conditions of that program. And then we also have insurance requirements, spelling out the responsibilities of the town versus the responsibilities of the organization. And then the town will accept post-construction maintenance of the field back with, back to the recreation department. So once Mountaineer Little League finishes their work, town will mow, fix fences, unclog toilets, that sort of thing. And then we do have a deadline of June 30, 2026. I know that the goal is to finish much, much ahead of that, but we want to get this taken care of in this fiscal year. So that it's a fairly simple contract as far as these things go. If anybody has any questions about construction or the project plan, I will defer those to either Rob or Mountaineer Little League. But if you have any questions about the legal side of things, I'm happy.
Any questions for Martha?
I just have a question about the amount. We have, the grant was for 50, and we approved 50, but budget's 110, so.
I think that the legal league is planning on, they have some donations already lined up. You've got some project grants already from
Fundations.
Yeah, yeah, they're doing, they're doing some work on their end to get things donated, raise funds, et cetera.
Love it.
Thank you, Martha.
Yep.
And thank you for getting that back quick. Okay, does the board have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for doing this and for understanding that we have to cross the Ts and dot the Is. And I really appreciate everyone's work in doing that. Thank you.
John, you have any questions?
I would say the same thing. I am so grateful for the Mountaineer Little League and everything that you do, not just for the, for the boys, but for the girls too. My son played in Mountaineer Little League years and years ago. And I had fun coaching him. And so y'all do good stuff and really appreciate the effort and the drive to make this happen. You know, we have unfortunately had to navigate the FEMA situation. And, but I think it's patently obvious to all of us that we just can't wait on FEMA anymore. And so appreciate Dick's, appreciate y'all. And I'm so glad that we're going to have the girls playing softball in the spring.
Julie?
I just want to say we're excited about this public and private collaboration between the Little League and Town of Waynesville. And I can't wait to be there in the spring when the girls play softball and say, let's get it on.
Yeah. Chuck, you think that too?
You need a motion? Anyone say something first?
I want to thank you myself personally, you know. I think Ashley, you and Richie both are role models for our kids. Both of you are role models, you know. You're for the girls, he's for the boys, you know, it's even. But thank you again for stepping up to the plate. And also, Mackie, thank you volunteer, you know, his services, you know, means a whole lot. You know, you guys making us feel the mirror image, as we were saying, of the Elks field down there. Might even make it a little better, right? But when we add the lady touch to it. Okay, with that being said, I will ask for a motion that this agreement be approved.
I move that we approve the agreement with Mountaineer Little League to renovate the Dutch Fisher Athletic Field.
Got a motion, Chuck?
Enthusiastically second.
Second by the lady softball player, Julia. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, shall laud sign. Okay?
I would like to make one point, Mayor. There was some confusion last time that only the board members can vote. The town attorney nor the Rob can vote because some people had the misconception that there were people that voted against the motion last time, when in fact it was unanimous.
I have to say, I played real softball. And so if I weren't allowed to vote, it wouldn't have been effective yet.
Yeah. But just because they didn't vote, they are not allowed to vote.
So, Rob, do you have that contract? Do you want to go ahead? If you would like to step over here to the clerk, we will take care of this right now. And as far as eight o'clock tomorrow morning, you can break ground. You've got my blessings.
Would the board entertain a motion for the rain to stop?
I wish we could, I'm telling you. Even though it's so dry right now, you know, we need it for, especially with the leaves and stuff out there, you know, and the mountains and stuff. We definitely don't want no more fires, you know, to take
I mean, Saturday is supposed to be nice.
Okay, thank you again, Ms. Ashley. And thank you again, Maggie, for stepping up.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, kind of a related question. Two sessions ago, two meetings ago, we voted to spend $350,000 to build another baseball field. Do we need to revisit that?
We are going to revisit that. Rob and I have talked about that, you know. It doesn't seem like FEMA is going to be pleasant to us and
And I don't know, I just, I just
Yeah, Rob and I and Luke have been throwing it around a bit, you know.
Luke and I have restructured that entire issue. We have put our architect on hold. And I mean, we can report on it or we, we don't have anything until November 18th. Why don't you come up and give us a rundown on what we're going to do?
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, we finished the RFQ today to put this out to bid.
And certainly if we determine that there might be some FEMA money, it might be a good idea, but I, it's, who knows?
We can still turn this into FEMA, our municipal stuff. But the prices are going to be considerably lower in the scope. Now, I will say that the dog park is fairly complicated because of the topography and the drainage. So we're still looking to do that through the architect and through the traditional bid process. But the two fields, Luke will go into.
We may get reimbursed when you have grandchildren.
Yeah, so we're experiencing the holdup a lot with FEMA is only barely reimbursing a fraction of our design and architect fee. So for that reason, we have decided to put the contract on hold with McAdams. We have a lot of work from them already to go forward with. We already have a kind of a design, but Rob and I have spoke about bidding it out ourselves and kind of separating it per general contractor specialty. So a masonry crew can do one job, fencing crew can do this, and then the infield and the outfield level that up. As far as doing the T-ball field, we need to revisit that at some point because we definitely need to be able to let T-ball be able to play in the spring. So timing that construction would be either before or after. So there could be a chance to get reimbursed on that. But at the same time, the T-ball field, I visited today and looked at it, and the infield for T-ball is grass. We could fix that field up a little bit and put some money into it. But at the same time, I think the main focus should be Vance Field, getting that fixed back up. But it's certainly an option to put money into the new field. We have sent a letter in the FEMA that we are relocating essentially. But, you know, it could cost $350,000 essentially, or maybe a little bit lower, but we don't have those hard figures yet, if that makes sense.
So the field at Vance Field, you're going to try to do in-house?
Yeah, I think Rob and I discussed bidding it out in-house, drawing up the RFP for it, kind of separating it out per general contractor specialty and trying to get a block wall backstop, netting, put in fencing, and just kind of piece that together. Hopefully it can come in a better cost efficient.
Yeah, okay.
But the dog park has a lot of tricky topography. There's more involved with the dog park. Myself and Rob, I feel more comfortable having an architect and engineer project manage that because of how tricky that can get.
Any questions for Luke? You have any? Anyone? Okay, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Yeah. Rob sent out, I don't know if you guys got a copy of it, but he sent out an email from the Worston Post, is that correct? The Worston Post for Western North Carolina pretty much got left out of funding for what's happening in FEMA. So we can send millions and millions of dollars to Venezuela, but we can't send millions and millions of dollars to North Carolina. I don't care to say that. Okay, we'll move on before I start getting political. All right, we move on. We've got a proclamation here tonight. The proclamation here is for the National First Responders Day, which will be October 28th, and I'll read it. Whereas first responders, including public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators and paramedics, and other emergency personnel stand on the front lines of our community setlessly serving and protecting the citizens of Waynesville, North Carolina in times of crises. And whereas first responders respond swiftly, courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. Whereas it is public interest for the citizens and civic leaders and the children of Waynesville, North Carolina to gain knowledge of and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responders' efforts in their respective communities. Whereas as of 2019, the U.S. Senate has included language recognizing public works alongside fellow and other first responders. Now resolved, I, Mary Terry Cole, due hereby designate October 28, 2025 as National First Responders Day. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities and events and ceremonies paying tribute to our public works, first responders alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Witness where I have to set my hand to call of the seal of the Town of Waynesville on the 28th day of October 2025. So anyone out there, you see one of your first responders on the street, tell them how much you appreciate it, okay?
Thank you, guys.
I'll probably need to drink a water after this. We shall move on. We've got another presentation here tonight by Kate Curtin of Environmental Sustainability Board. Kate?
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to give you a brief presentation. The Environmental Sustainability Board is proposing that Waynesville adopt municipal tree ordinance. And tonight, I'd like to just briefly review some of the highlights of this ordinance and some of the benefits that the town might see upon adoption of this program. I'd first like to say that the, as you know, the Environmental Sustainability Board has been charged with mandate of helping to promote reduction of energy use in the community, promoting the use of electric transportation, and also to promote the long-term sustainability of the natural resources. So this particular proposal had, came about from discussions with the urban ecology team of the board. And I want to just touch on a few of these main points. First of all, the ordinance establishes the town's authority to protect and maintain trees on public properties, streets, and right-ofways. And I want to emphasize that these are publicly owned trees. This ordinance does not refer to trees that occur on private properties. Secondly, the ordinance delegates oversight responsibility for the care of our city trees, our town trees, to the Director of Public Works. And this is in order for there to be coordination among all the departments who are responsible for tree maintenance. The ordinance also outlines the policies and management standards for public trees. And this really simply means that following standard are bore cultural maintenance standards. The ordinance also requires a proactive annual tree maintenance, management plan and a budget. And finally, the tree board, the ordinance establishes an advisory tree board. And I'd like to elaborate just a little bit on what that is. Basically, the tree board is to serve as an advocate for urban and community forests. It'll be composed up to seven citizens, one of which will be a member of the Environmental Sustainability Board. And the Director of Public Works will serve as an ex officio member. Essentially, the tree board will help the town get the work done in terms of promoting protection of urban trees. It will assist in reviewing the tree canopy, tree canopy maintenance plans, the strategic planning for canopy expansion, as well as promoting municipal and community tree planting programs. It'll also help aware, raise public awareness about the importance of trees. Some examples would be to organize and Some examples would be to organize and implement an annual Arbor Tree Day celebration, sponsor educational outreach workshops, and develop educational materials that can be delivered to the public, and involve the community in tree planting events. In addition, a mandate of the tree board would be to help bring in additional funding to implement some of these town tree programs. And this would be essentially to investigate the availability of grants that would help to advance these goals. I want to briefly just mention some of the benefits that the town would see with adoption of proactive management plan and promotion of the urban tree canopy. And one really big environmental benefit would be to reduce the urban heat island effect. And numerous studies have shown that with urban development, when you have a lot of pavement and buildings, it's much hotter than a surrounding environment that is dominated by trees. And we all know that. You stand under a tree instead of out in the blazing sun, you feel cooler. Well, there are a couple of reasons for this. One is that the trees are simply blocking the sunlight from reaching the ground. And the other is, or reaching a building or pavement. And the other is that as trees take up water, the water is transpired out of the leaves and evaporated and cool vapors go into the atmosphere. We, even in smaller communities such as our urban scene here in Waynesville, there are very real heat effects from urban development. And the board worked with a student project from Western Carolina this past year. And the student examined thermal imagery during summer months for the municipality of Waynesville. And they found significant heat islands associated with the business district and the multi-use residential areas surrounding it as compared to more forested areas. And this difference in temperature range from fifteen to twenty degrees difference in heat. Other environmental benefits include carbon storage. Through photosynthesis, when a tree takes in carbon dioxide and releases oxygen, it captures that carbon and actually stores it for energy for the tree and also the components that make up the structure of the tree. This in turn helps to reduce carbon dioxide emissions as well as reducing other air pollutants. Another benefit is that occurs because of rainwater infiltration and evaporation when you have trees. This helps to, when you have a vegetated area, water is able to infiltrate into the ground. It evaporates from the trees and significantly reduces surface stormwater runoff as compared to impervious surfaces in an urban scenario. And also, the tree canopy preserves animal habitat such as songbirds and beneficial insects that are pollinators. There are several economic benefits that I wanted to point out. The town can realize cost savings with reduced energy for air conditioning in the town-owned buildings. There are reduced liability risks through having tree risk assessments made and proactive management of trees to maintain a healthy urban forest. And also by adopting the items that were mentioned in the tree board, the town of Waynesville will be able to once again have the Tree City USA status. And the importance of this is that having this status makes the town eligible for state and private urban forest grants. I want to mention probably one of the most important benefits of urban trees is how they promote the aesthetic appeal, value, and character of Waynesville as it reflects on our environmental concerns as a gateway to just looking down. Finally, I just want to summarize that by adopting a proactive maintenance protection policy for the promotion of trees on public properties will help to ensure the long-term stewardship of natural resources for the community's benefit as well as to those visitors to our town. And it will help to foster protection of the broader community forest through community engagement. We hope that you will seriously consider this ordinance and feel that it's appropriate to adopt it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Anthony, you have questions?
No, I just want to be very clear. This is for public property, streets and right of ways. This is not private property. And I'm directing that directly at you. It's not public, private property. It's just for public property. Thank you for all your work on this. That's perfect sense.
John?
No, sir. I'm a huge tree hugger, so.
Yep.
Without it, we wouldn't have the great Smokies.
That's right.
Absolutely. I just, two little quick things here, and this one's going to go towards Rob. So John and the agents are what a cordialists have we, is there, whoever's in that position now, signed off on this?
We have the opportunity to send Bill Skelton to class to become an author, to become a certified arborist. And he's agreed to do that. So I think he's made the application.
That's right.
And is it the community college? I can't remember which group is going to be providing the arborist training that was offered to us.
I'm not sure. It'll be funded by the North Carolina Department of Forestry.
Right, so the training will be free, but Bill Skelton will become a certified arborist. And he's.
And then my follow-up question is that we have one of the most renowned architects, landscape architects in the United States of America, who has a fabulous son right up here, has Thomas Wolfben contacted us all to consult through this whole process?
No, ma'am.
Thomas has offered to consult with the Environmental Sustainability Board. He declined to be a member as he's very busy.
Yes, he's very busy, but I just was curious what his.
He did offer to help us out, and we will be looking to do that. I'm sure.
He's short.
He's incredible. And my other thing, I was going to piggyback on, you know, Anthony, just make sure that the public knows this has no personal impact on their personal properties. This is town property, so.
Exactly.
But it does provide great education opportunities for public, for their private property.
Absolutely.
Chuck, you asked about Bill Skelton. The Deputy Director of Administration for the Public Works Department has been part of this process. So she has been involved as the Public Works Department will be coordinating efforts. Tree maintenance in the town from cemeteries, rec department, to public parks, streets and center street. And I can, the other thing I was going to say is the Environmental Sustainability Board spent a lot of time on this. They hashed it over ad nauseam almost. So it's received a lot of attention. So I'd like to thank them for all the work.
It's definitely a win-win for Waynesville, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So what we'll need to do here, we've got a motion to accept the presentation. And also, would that be a second motion to approve the ordinance?
It appears that's how the agenda is written. I don't.
I don't think.
It shouldn't be one motion.
I think you can just approve the ordinance.
I was just, I always get directions from my friend over here. Okay, then what we'll need is a motion in order to approve this amendment to the ordinance.
I'm going to approve and adopt the new tree ordinance for the town of Waynesville.
Got a motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Anthony. All in favor, say aye. Aye, afo, shalite sun. And thank you all again for working so hard on this. We're going to make Waynesville always beautiful. Correct. Now we've got the Public Art Commission presentation with Kansas and George Kennedy. Is George here?
Everybody. So I'm Candace Poulton. I'm the Town Clerk, Assistant to the Manager, PIO and Training. And lucky for me, the staff liaison for the Waynesville Public Art Commission. We're a great group. They're a lot of fun to be around and to work with. And with me tonight, I have George Kenny, our chairman. He is a shining example of what a chairman to an advisory board should be. He's wonderful. So thanks for being here. Whenever you're ready, Jesse. We haven't talked in a while, so I just thought it'd be nice to make an appearance and how they talk about what we're working on and how things are going. Our mission of the Waynesville Public Art Commission is to engage the community and enrich public spaces through original art that celebrates Waynesville's historic, cultural, natural, and human resources. And at the end, I'm going to present to you what we're going to be unveiling next year. It incorporates our mission heavily. Wow, this is kind of hard to read from back here. So what we do, we've been around since 1999. John, your mother was one of the original folks that served on our commission. So we do a lot of things. We don't just pick and choose art around town. It's a very involved process. We acquire artwork through donations, commission, or purchase. The cougar actually right below us is one of the public art pieces that we had donated. So we help facilitate that process. We prepare sites for art placement in conjunction with our public works team. We manage the collections, so making sure that plaques are up to date, that pieces look clean, and we handle any sort of complaints or guidance from the public to maintain those pieces. We plan programs and projects, which includes creating and posting artists, RFPs, applying for grants, and reporting on those grants, hosting community input sessions when commissioning art, which if anyone was a part of that last year for the Pigeon Community Center, it was a lot of fun, had a lot of great input from the public. So we're really trying to move forward with heavily involving the public. We direct costs incurred in the relocation or conservation of artwork owned by the town. For instance, the lovely Folk Moot piece that was originally out here by the police department, we helped coordinate that moving process. Ricky, I believe that was one of the first tasks I, yep, absolutely, did a great job. They're really happy to have it there, and it just, it suits that space. We provide background information about the inspiration and display of public artwork through appropriate signage, brochures, and digital media. The Waynesville Public Art Trail. So I guess to the average person, it does seem like there are some art pieces that are kind of scattered about town, but it is very intentional. We have worked with some folks at the Mountaineer and our artists and our Public Art Commission to put together a public art trail. It is on our website, which I'd love to share with you all at the end of this presentation. We also have an art booklet, which the individual can scan a QR code with their phone, and it links you to the audible of the art piece. The map is also in that booklet and on our website. And last time we updated this, it said seventeen pieces, so now we're up to twenty and working on another one. Yeah, and it extends to Historic Main Street, Frog Level, and Hazelwood. So it's all over town. Oh, and right there is our Pigeon Community Multicultural Center, mural that we just did recently, the one on the left there. So recently, the Waynesville Public Art Commission has made an unofficial and ambitious goal to commission a piece of public art every year. That's just something our commission has taken upon themselves. I feel that when I first joined, we were a little more reactive. You know, if someone wanted to commission art or had an idea, we kind of responded to that. Now we're a little more proactive, so we're actively fundraising. And we have our sights set on certain pieces of artwork that we would like to see in town as well as the general public. So recently, as of last year, we introduced our first annual Chefs on Fire fundraising event. Our mayor was able to attend this year, and it was a lot of fun. Trying to bring in more food-focused events, which in my opinion is also in art, and have live music, support local chefs and artists. And this year, we raised a lot more money. It was just our second annual event. We raised over five thousand dollars. We also sell T-shirts throughout the year as fundraisers. Come by and see me if you'd like to buy one. They're really cool. They're tie-dye, and they have our troubadour musicians on them. And with the money fundraised over the last year, in conjunction with the recent grant awarded by the Medford Endowment Fund, a brand-new mural will be commissioned by mid-April 2026. So that was one of the budget amendments you all approved in your consent agenda. And there's Jesse and Mackenzie at last year's Chefs on Fire, making Bananas Foster. And this is from this year's event. We had it at Frog Level. We had a great turnout, live music, there's our auction. So what's next? So currently on the side of high country style, there is an older kind of faded mural. It's in pretty bad shape. And we are hoping to have something kind of piggybacking along the new Main Street arch that was just built a couple of years ago and kind of bring in some history here. So we have the funding to put out an RFP starting in January to hopefully get an artist to paint a scene from 1930s Waynesville when the arch was originally erected. So this is just an inspiration photo. I believe Alex may have given this one to me. But that's the idea. We're going to have time period cars. We're going to have the shops as they were in the 1930s, and of course, the original arch. And that's it. I would like to just show you all the website because it's really cool. Maybe, Jesse, can you click on that for me? Maybe. So here you can kind of see the art trail. Self-guided tour. Should have the map at the top, I believe. Perhaps? No, but that's okay. It just highlights all of our pieces. We're actively adding our new ones. We've got a few placeholders on there. And then you can see there's like a little video and some auditory if you click on the play button. And then it shows you where the art piece is on the map. And that's it. Y'all have any questions for us?
Good question.
That's very nice.
Mountaineer did.
Julie?
Wonderful.
John?
Thank you.
I'll make one comment. We're having a mural painted right now, right behind us.
Yes, so that's not the Public Art Commission. We can't take credit for that, but it is beautiful. I spoke to the artist Raphael today, and he is interested in working with the Public Art Commission on maybe introducing some other fundraising ideas and things like that. Super great guy. He's doing a great job. It's beautiful if y'all haven't checked it out. And I just want to emphasize that we couldn't do it without donations from the community and without your support council. Because public art, it can be tough to fund sometimes, but it's important and helps make Waynesville a beautiful place. So thank you. Awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Candace. You've done an awesome job. You've got a good.
Thank you. And George, I mean, George is amazing. He really has led the Art Commission in a great direction. And yeah, we're kicking butt and taking names.
George, you have anything to add to that?
Thank you. It is lovely. Yeah.
First, I'd like to thank you for having me back this evening. It's nice to be in front of you again. I'd like to thank Candace and Jesse for all of their support that we get on the commission. Working with a group of artists is a lot like trying to herd cats. So we need people that say, okay, but how are we going to do it? When are we going to do it? Who's going to do it? That kind of thing. And they've been great with that. This mural that's coming up, you'll actually be able to stand at the corner in front of Truist and see that mural and then see the new arch at the other end of Main Street. So it will bookend Main Street. So we're very excited about that. We're going to put out a request for a proposal in January, and then we'll go from there.
January 2nd, I'm trying to remember the timeline. January 2nd, RFP will go out, which will, you know, involve all the process as well. And then by the end of March, after all public input sessions approval from council, we will get that process started. So hopefully by mid-April, if the weather's good.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you again so much for what you all did.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, there's one other thing. I believe this is entirely publicly supported. I don't believe there are any tax dollars.
Correct. Can't emphasize that enough. Yes, thank you.
That's true. Everything's been fundraised, you know. It's true, everything's been fundraised, you know.
Yeah, it's been fundraised and grants, we've been very fortunate.
Yeah, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Okay, move on into new business. We got an approval for a proposal for HR consulting services with Lisa Delane Honeycutt for a compensation study focused on public works positions within the water treatment, sewer treatment, and electric divisions. Paige, you gonna beep me up here?
I did, good evening Mayor, members of Town Council. I'm here tonight to request your approval for a critical project regarding our personnel needs. Well, we're seeking approval of a proposal for HR consulting services with Lisa Delane Honeycutt for a compensation study focused on key positions within our Public Works Department, specifically the water treatment, water distribution, sewer treatment, sewer collections, and electric divisions. This proposal is located within the new business section of your agenda packets. The purpose of this study is very straightforward and urgent. We need to ensure that the salaries and pay ranges for these vital positions are competitive with the external labor market. The need is critical because the Public Works Department has experienced a turnover rate of 39.76% in the current calendar year as of October 17th. Several employees have explicitly cited more money as their reason for leaving, including positions such as treatment plant operators, utility maintenance workers, equipment operators, and electric groundsman. We recommend engaging with Lisa Delane Honeycutt, who's an experienced HR consultant and recommended to us by the MAPS Group, to conduct a targeted compensation study. The details of that study are in your agenda packet. The consultant's proposal outlines a total engagement of around 80 hours over an 11-week duration, and I will tell you, we've already started working a little bit together. She's a lovely person, I'm looking forward to working with her on this if you all approve it. The rate is $125 per hour, which is competitive for consulting services and the HR industry. The total estimated cost is $10,000 plus expenses, which will be allocated across three enterprise funds, the water fund, the sewer fund, and the electric fund. This is appropriate, given that the majority of the turnover includes positions within these particular divisions that are funded through these enterprise funds. I do have Ms. Honeycutt's resume here.
She's done work for us.
Quite seasoned. So basically tonight, we request a motion for your consideration to approve the proposal. We strongly recommend approval to address the high turnover and ensure we can competitively recruit and retain our essential public works staff. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, and I think Mr. Bourne and Mr. Reese are available as well, thank you.
Anyone have questions for?
You mentioned a 30, turnover rate of 39.76%. How many people does that represent?
I want to say, and I haven't checked the number this week, but I believe it's 30, between 35 and 37.
Of how many?
Of 83 positions.
And more money is cited as one reason.
Correct.
What else?
Retirement. Some people have left because they needed to, and then a few others have cited they weren't happy with the organization and personal reasons was the other reason.
I've sat in those Public Works Department meetings and every time I do that, I come away impressed by our people and I cannot tell you how frustrating it is to me to the fact that we have lost 30-something people out of 80, good people. So, and if this is what we got to do, then let's do it and, you know, the duration strikes me as not fast enough, because if we continue to hemorrhage people, we're, you know, we're gonna, I have, and you heard me say this the other day, is that if a meteor hits this chamber now, tomorrow, nothing changes with the town of Wayneville. If the same thing happens at Public Works, the town stops operation. And here we are, having lost 40% of our people. So, the question is, can we speed this up? And secondly, it's not been that long ago that we did a full compensation study of the entire staff. And so here, just a couple of years later, we find ourselves having to do another one focused specifically on public works. And so my question is, if we have this hole in public works and we're looking at this targeted study, should we be thinking about renewing the full study?
We're actually a step or two ahead of you, John. Rob and I have already met with the MAPS Group, and our goal is to bring a proposal to you all next for an organization-wide compensation study. And the results of these, of this particular one, will be integrated into the holistic one.
I think we did a study six years ago, it was one of the first things that I proposed, and I think the standard is you do it every five to 10 years, so it's falling right in.
It's been that long ago?
It's been six years.
It was before I came to work here.
But it's $17,000.
Yes, and, yeah, it was $17,000. So the costs go up as well.
That's true.
Yeah, but this falls right in line with needing to do one five to 10 years.
Have a question, how many vacancies do we have in the Public Works Department right now?
Currently?
Yes.
As of this week, we have nine.
I'd like to thank the department, I mean, we're undergoing a tremendous reorganization and there's going to be a lot of change that's happening and I think that's part of it. This is all for the good and I just want to compliment the staff and you Paige on everything you're doing to our good employees and to keep employees happy and you have been doing a good job, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck.
Also, there, I go to community colleagues who started the lineman program, and it might be to, for us to maybe like offer employees like some kind of grant that someone in, an employee that's already employed with Wayneville Public Works would like to continue his education and us pay for that.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Person to go to that school and, but we could put a little stipulations to that, if we send you to that school, you've got to give us two to three years. I mean, you know, if you don't want to send one there and then they go somewhere else, but I've talked with someone already kind of concerning that about our, especially in the electric department, that's where you have the most, you know, complicated job, you know, for, you know, us is filling jobs in that position is in the electrical department because it's so highly skilled, you know, there. But again, thank you for the work that you're doing in that to try to make things happen.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that proposal for HR in the amount of $10,000.
I'd like to move that we approve the proposal to do the compensation study in the amount of $10,000.
Okay, got a motion by John and second by Chuck, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, shall light, son? Thank you, Paige.
Thank you all.
I look forward to seeing the.
And the next item is a formation of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit as an extension of the Downtown Wayneville Commission. Ms. Beth? We haven't seen you in a while.
I know, I've been hiding.
You too.
I am, I am Beth Gilmore, Director of the Downtown Wayneville Commission. Several months ago, I came before you to ask for approval to move forward with the formation of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit as an extension of the Downtown Wayneville Commission, and I am back tonight to present to you the articles of incorporation that were prepared by Martha for the formation of that nonprofit.
Okay, anyone have questions for?
Do I see John's name on one of them?
Okay, then we'll need a motion to approve that incorporated, which will be prepared by our town attorney.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, got a motion by?
Second.
At the second by Chuck, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, shall light, son? Before you leave?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can you give us kind of a how the Church Street Festival?
Yes, sir, it was great, the weather was perfect, we had about 100 vendors, which is consistent with Church Street. We had, we've gotten great feedback from all of the merchants, it was, was a record-breaking day for them until Apple Harvest Fest came the following weekend, and then that became the new record. But it was, it actually ran so smooth that it scared me. I thought I had forgotten something or overlooked something, it was really a great day.
I really liked the new setup, I think I talked to you on that day about it, there was spacing and it just, the flow just went so much better, the way they set up the booths.
Yes, that, that came about somewhat organically because of the bump outs that we've added to the street forced us to spread the layout out just a little bit, but I agree, it worked very well. It actually created a very smooth traffic pattern when traffic was coming in to, for the vendors to set up their booths and then to get off the street at the end of the day, it created a lot more space for the traffic to get through there and I didn't have any angry vendors that day that I was aware of. It was a very, very smooth operation.
You did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving right along. We got communication from our.
We got three other things on here.
Whoa, 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 we got those amendments. I am sorry, we've got those amendments, let me move back here. Hang on just one second. Okay. First one where we'll do that, resolve the authorization of the submission of the SRF loan grant for Brandon Branch Pump Station and Canton Fly Wayneville Water Connection. Rob, if you want to.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Touch base on that.
Thank you. As you know, we've applied for a interconnection state revolving loan, loan with 100% principal forgiveness and received the first, first part of that from the state. We do this in connection or in coordination with Clyde and Canton. We've been asked by McGillan Associates to be the sponsor of a second grant due to the requirement that the local government commission approve it. We have, Clyde and Canton don't have the assets necessary to, to be able to qualify for the SRF loan, and we do. In approving this resolution, you'll note that it says that the town pledges that it'll pay for the, any additions to the grant, should, excuse me, to the loan, should it not, should it not be fully funded. I'd like to, you know, point out this, this is a loan that we expect to have principal forgiveness. Should the loan not provide principal forgiveness, you have the right to refuse that loan as you did earlier with, with the loan you were provided for the, for the Little Champion Pump Station. So I'd recommend that you pass the resolution and understand that if the state doesn't provide us with 100, 100% principal forgiveness, we'll, you know, have to tell Canton and Clyde that we can't, we can't fund the balance of that connect, interconnect because it is for their benefit. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anthony, you have any questions? Do you not, sir? John?
No, sir.
Julie?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to approve the resolution permitting the SRF application to be filed.
Second.
Not a motion, but Chuck, second, but Julie? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, shall light, son? Next order of business will be a budget amendment for the purchase of two HVAC units that were all sitting here freezing, correct? Till I had a hot plate. I'm sorry, I can't lug you my hot plate. Until I had my hot flash air, but anyway.
There's a heater over here, I'm getting hot, cold, hot, cold.
Yeah.
Okay, and Hutch? Hutch, are you going to be the presenter on this? They've laid this on you, Hutch.
Alright, so, working with, oh, he's gone now, but Chief Adams and Elizabeth, they're having a lot of issues in this building with the heat, the cool, pretty much everybody has a complaint on any given day and it's all justified. What we found, right outside of the wall over there is a unit, actually it's right above you, unit number eight has, the, lost its ability to, to maintain the refrigerant. The system's from November of 2008 and I've got all the data on this, every building the town has, and this building in particular, a lot of the units are old. So I'm not sure what was going on before I came, however, talking with Gentry Heating who's got the service agreement for us now, trying to put a proactive plan together, proactive but kind of reactive, just based on where we're at, but to start incorporating some, some purchases and replacements before we get to the point where they failed and we're backtracking, trying to, trying to expedite the process. I've worked with Gentry, I've gotten quotes from those guys. Also, as of this morning, got some quotes from Mike Heating and Air and MB Haynes. Went back to those guys this afternoon, looking for a more high-efficient units, which, still waiting on a few quotes from Gentry and Mike's, but MB Haynes, the units that they're providing that are at 17 SEER as opposed to the one I got from Gentry at 14 SEER is probably about $10,000 more for two units. So the one that failed is number eight, but number six is also, it's a November 2008 carrier unit. So we were thinking, based on the quote, it would make more sense to replace two now because with the mobilization of Crane and all the extra work, it was going to be about $6,000 cheaper to replace two as opposed to one at a time. So, still waiting on a few of those quotes to come back to see if it's reasonable to move forward with the lesser efficient, only because the, I mean, it's already almost November, with the higher efficiency carrier unit, they've quoted four to seven week lead time on that particular model.
Yeah.
So I should have the additional quotes from Gentry and Mike's, probably tomorrow I close the business, I'm hoping, as far as the more high-efficient units, but overall, we definitely need to buckle down and make sure we're being proactive on all these, we're going to be having this conversation a lot more than. We're going to be having this conversation a lot more than anybody wants to.
Yeah.
So this would be the first step in a plan that we need to put together pretty quick.
Yeah. Once this, just put a strain on the other.
Right.
I have a question, is the, or Julia, you want to ask?
No, no, I'm just saying this, yeah.
Is the 42,000 enough?
Uh, the 42,000 originally was for the.
The one unit?
No. 42,000 was not only for the two units, but it was also, this building is controlled with a Carrier iView Building Automation software. So that's a, kind of a separate issue right now. But what we're talking about is just the units out there, just the antiquated units that we need to bring up to 2025 and beyond as opposed to.
So essentially, you don't have prices to do the work. We're just.
We do have, we have prices on a, a lesser efficient. All the, all the carrier units that, I may be talking a different language to you guys, but.
No, I would rather spend the extra $10,000 to get an efficient one.
Right.
Will save us 20, 30,000 over the course of its lifetime than to be more efficient.
Right, so we're looking anywhere from 25 to 28 on the lesser efficient models. And the only one quote that I've gotten back so far is somewhere around 37.
Okay.
And that's for two.
So that's.
Right.
That's, that's still, that part of it is TBD, correct?
Right, we're still waiting on more data, more information.
And, and just as side, it might be me to blame for all of this. My building across the street, I have replaced every HVAC unit in that building. And so apparently it's contagious and has moved up here. And my apologies that, so, I, you know, I mean, I, I wish I could say I am oblivious to all of this, but I've become completely versed in HVAC replacement in the last two, three months.
My suggestion is if you're interested in getting those, let me explain a little bit about SEER ratings. The 13 and 14 is considered a standard SEER rating. 17 is, is the, the lowest level of the very efficient SEER ratings. If you want a 17, then just add 10,000 to the budget amendment. And I'll, when we sign it, we'll correct it. Secondly, is, it's very possible that we, we will have to wait on the delivery of that 17 depending on the other, the other vendors. We're using buying services. For instance, we have Omni Partners as a co-op that, that, that we've been suggested to use. But so if you want a 17, we may have to wait to have it purchased and installed and just add 10,000 to the budget amendment. We'll be funded, you know, we'll have the funds available. If we don't need it, it just goes back in the fund balance.
So we need 52 for this.
Yes, sir.
17.
Yes, that's right.
I am in favor of that.
Okay.
Even if we have to wait because like Anthony said, it would save us a whole lot of money down the road.
It'll save more than $10,000 of life time.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, that is my motion.
Second. Second by Chuck, all in favor, say aye. Approve, shall I, son?
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Pretty good when you come and get more than you ask for.
I will just say that having grown up following the Farmer's Almanac, this is not going to be a good winter. So the quicker we can get to this, the better. Because there are black woolly worms. There's no worms on the woolly worms this year, they're all black.
And there's a lot of acorns.
Yes, sir, and the squirrels are going crazy.
They are.
We need to prepare ourselves. Ricky, you're, you're, your first year on the job. After winter time.
Okay, our next order of business is adoption of the revised rules for the Wayneville Rec Recreation Center.
Oh, well, that, I just was going to save that for my report, Mayor. If Rob has any business to present.
No, me, my dad. Okay. Are you done? Yes. Are you done? You don't have anything?
Okay, all right, well, then it is.
We'll make that part of the town attorney's pitch.
Yes, sir. Luke came to me and asked me to review the rules to make sure that they had the appropriate authority in the Rec Center's rules to suspend or revoke memberships or use privileges just for misbehavior at the Rec Center that maybe didn't fall within any of the specific activity rules and regulations. So I've put together revised general rules that would clearly state that the department director has the discretion to decide what kind of behavior violates the policy and that they have the sole, they are the decider. And as far as suspending or revoking membership privileges at the Rec Center, but, but within the boundaries of the federal anti-discrimination laws.
Nice. Chuck, do you have any questions for Martha? Can you help turn in that? Julia?
No, sir.
John?
Not a one.
Anthony?
No, I'm on.
Okay, then we'll, she will need a motion in that order to approve the revised rules that she has laid out there, correct? So.
Yes.
I will need a, a motion in that order.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the revised rules as presented.
Okay, got a motion by John?
Second.
Second, Anthony, all in favor, say aye. Approve, shall I, son? All right, what's that? Do you have anything else?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll move on to communication from Mayor and the council. So are you, Chuck?
One thing, please. I, when I was reading today that North Carolina is suspending any SNAP benefits effective November 1st, I, I called Paige to ask her if, what she estimated the number of our employees who might receive supplemental nutrition.
But supplemental nutrition assistance.
Assistance programs, not SNAP benefits, formerly food stamps. She, she estimated possibly 10, 15% of our employees may receive SNAP benefits. The, we, and she told me that she's been very concerned about this the last week. We, we talked about a, you know, giving our employees, you know, an extra payment or something like that if they were getting food stamps. But that doesn't work, because you have to pay tax on it. It could mess up their qualification for food stamp, for SNAP. So I, I, so in talking with her about that, I, I have a suggestion and, and, and thinking that it might be a good idea for us to think about some sort of a food pantry for our, for our employees. You know, we certainly want to, for people, Paige is concerned about them retaining their dignity. We don't want to, you know, it's, it, it can be, might, might be somewhat humiliating. So what I would like to do is to make a motion that we, in the event that SNAP benefits are not paid for the month of November, that our town manager and HR director present a plan to us at our next meeting to establish and fund a food pantry for the Town of Wayneville employees.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second, but Anthony, all in favor, say aye. Approve, shall I, son? There's another thing, are we still, we're just paid. Are we still taking like people that pays extra on something on a utility? Isn't we taking that money and giving that money extra like to Salvation Army or Haywood Christian Ministry? Is that still a works for people that are making donations at the, at the utilities department? Is that still happening or is that gone? It's gone?
It's called a roundup program, but I, I can't decide whether we're still doing it or not.
I just, it's been so long since I checked with you all about that. That is something that maybe there is, excuse me, that funding that you could maybe use this funding to maybe help start that pantry or something, you know, and house for our employees or something.
Can I just, I wanted to say that this is very front and center in the community and we've got so many nonprofits that are already doing this. And I think if we could piggyback Paige and we can give you that whole list that you can give to our employees, and they might even come and do special events and within our programs. We've got Second Blessings, Haywood Christian Ministries, we've got Salvation Army, Grace of Episcopal Church, we've got Canton. I mean, we've got a lot of resources out there that are doing these, these pantries and stuff like that, and they are very acute and aware of what's getting ready to be facing us. And so if we could piggyback with them, and I'll be glad to get you a list of, of what they're saying and what they've got, the options they've got. And again, like I, I agree with, with Chuck that we need to respect our employees and be mindful. But yeah, it's hard to get in a food line and to stand there. It breaks my heart to see military members, but we've seen all over the news, people in uniform in these military lines, you know, have to ask for food at this point. So anything we can do, yes.
To be clear, Haywood County has 8,211.
Yeah.
People on SNAP.
On SNAP, yeah.
And, and I'm concerned that, and, and as are many of the folks in the food pantries, that it's not going to do sufficiently to take care of the needs.
Yeah.
I'll get you that list that we've been working on in the community. Yeah. Oh, and First United Methodist Church, they're also part of the, this whole.
But I agree, there's a dignity aspect of this.
Yeah. Sounds hard.
Yeah, actually, the director of Haywood Christian Ministry has been to all the municipalities, but he hasn't been to Wayneville. He sent me an email back a few weeks ago about asking how to go about doing a presentation to our board. So maybe, maybe Paige, I mean Paige, Candace. Maybe there's something that we might get in touch with that director at Haywood Christian Ministries in the one in Bethel, the one that has the pantry that over there about, that he had mentioned about wanting to give us a presentation. Did you do that? Do you know his name?
Yeah, Chuck.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, could you get in touch with him and, and just say that the mayor had an email from you about, asking about doing a presentation and that maybe we could line him up for our next board meeting? It, it might be something that he's coming to us about to tell us what they offer.
I know this is.
Yeah, thank you.
Paige, I serve as the Chair of the Salvation Army Advisory Board and the Army has significant resources that are dedicated to just this kind of situation. So I'll reach out to the Army and see if maybe we can set up some kind of direct connection. So, and I'll let you know.
That's a good, that's a good one. I was on there for 10 years.
Yeah, you were.
Yeah, that's a good organization. Yeah.
Okay. Being someone who went through that as a, as a teenager.
You're what, man?
You, you know my story of where I came from as a teenager. So food insecurity really strikes me as something they're going to take care of.
John, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Anthony?
No, sir, thank you.
Do you want to give us kind of an update on the MPO?
Oh, yeah, as you know, we were, not just Russ, but also there's some closings coming to the.
Exit 27, all for them.
Yes, absolutely. There, there was going to be a one lane closing coming from exit 27. Fortunately, the weather helped it off for a week. That's going to be postponed until next week. So starting on November the 2nd.
Yeah.
There, we will be down to one lane going westbound from exit 27 as they divert the traffic over to a temporary bridge. And that is just a temporary bridge. So until they take the old one down and build it, then the traffic will come back. Currently, we're replacing 14 bridges in Haywood County that need replacing after these 14, there's 14 more. That's from not having the infrastructure rebuilt over the years and then the effects of Hurricane Helene. Also moving forward on Interstate 40 to Tennessee, the bids were originally 1 billion, they're now at like 2 billion. Right? So we're mitigating that. And also something that's going to be brought up at the next MPO board is managed lanes. There's been lots of misunderstanding propagated by Sinclair Broadcasting. It is not a toll lane across the board. So you would not have to pay a toll to come from Buckham County to him, to Haywood County. But it would be expanding Interstate 40 to six to seven lanes in each direction with two managed lanes, one for freight and one for high occupancy vehicles that they could use it. So if people were carpooling, they could use those dedicated lanes. But it is to widen it to six to seven lanes in each direction. The reason to do that is if it's not a toll lane, it would probably be 20 to 30 years before that would be taken care of. And if you go to the toll lanes, it would have that come in about five to 10 years instead. It also would reduce, there's a whole presentation, but reduce fatalities on the average by 16% and increase reliability by up to 25%. But that's something that's coming before the MPO. But there's a big misconception out there that it, all the lanes are going to be toll lanes. That is not the case. It's just two lanes, but widening to six to eight. Sinclair's very good at dropping misinformation.
Could we put in a dedicated out-of-state plate slang?
Well, there is one for freight.
Oh, my goodness.
Just saying. But that's coming up before the board, the next MPO meeting. But I may have a presentation for you at the next board here to get your input before it goes before the MPO. People have asked me my opinions, I can't give my opinion on it since I am the Chair and it's actually unethical to try to persuade the board prior to them getting their information. So if people are saying I don't have an opinion, I do. But I, I have an ethical obligation not to try to persuade the board.
Yeah. Again.
Just fantastic, the misinformation out right now.
Yeah. The only other thing I can think of is Rob has made mention that the finance department, they had to reschedule the repayment of that parking lot because of the rain going on this week. It's supposed to start, what, November?
We, we'd like to say that they're going to pay one on next Monday.
Next Monday. So hopefully then after that, we can restructure, you get, get our, our finance department moved back to where the location where they should be. Correct? Was there anything else I missed out?
Oh, you did, correct?
Okay. All right, with that said, I.
Tuesday's election day.
Tuesday's election day. Don't forget election day there for sure, you know.
And early voting runs through Saturday.
This is the only Saturday that you can vote on.
Three o'clock.
Yeah, it's, it's low turnout.
I was warning you, it's low turnout.
Very low turnout.
Best of luck, you're all in the room.
Yeah, we're all.
That's true.
Sure, you know. Okay, but that said, I, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Approve.